Good evening. I'd like to open our meeting. It's Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We're here in the city council chambers. And if you join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Mac from First Baptist Church is here to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Father, we want to come before you this evening just to express our love and gratitude for you. As we are here today, we want to say thank you for the city that we are in. Thank you for these leaders that are here and their willingness to serve here, just this community. But we thank you for this country and the protection and this blessing and the freedoms that we have. It is an honor to be able to be here tonight and to have you in this country. But we just invite you into this place, Lord, for all the decisions that are going to be made tonight. Lord, we just pray for wisdom and discernment and just unity and peace. Though we just pray your protection over our city and over our leaders and over all the people within it. Thank you for all that you do and all that you are. And ultimately, Lord, we thank you for the Savior that we have by the name of Jesus. Thank you for the forgiveness of sins as available to all. We just thank you for this life that you offer us. Lord, we love you and we thank you. And again, you are welcome in this meeting tonight. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Our first item here is to go over the minutes from the last couple of meetings and approval.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes of September second, two thousand and twenty-five city council meeting and minutes of the September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five city council work session.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the approval of appropriation ordinance number nine.
I move to approve the appropriation ordinance number nine dated September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second. Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next couple of items are proclamations. And we're we're going to designate September seventeenth to the twenty-third as Constitution Week. And we ask the citizens of Augusta to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the constitutions and what they had of those ideas in seventeen eighty-seven. And then the next proclamation is designating October fifth to eleventh as Public Power Week to recognize our electric utility for its contributions to the community and to educate customer owners, owners, policymakers, and the employees on benefits of public power. So those things are duly done. Thank you. Now, I believe Connie Hummel is here from Go Augusta to recognize the winners of the two thousand and twenty-five Adopt a Pot Contest.
Today, we celebrate the winners of our Adopt a Pot Contest. Individuals who creativity and care have made our downtown more beautiful than it already is. Their efforts remind us that small acts of beautification can have a big impact on our shared spaces. We also want to extend our sincere thanks to the Augusta City Council for providing the prize money that made this contest possible. Your continued support empowers residents to take pride in their community and contribute in many full ways. Celebrating our Adopt a Pot Champions, our first place person goes to Jennifer Eagleson.
I know, that's what somebody said.
Yeah. Congratulations. Our second place winner is the Augusta Arts Council. And our last place winner is Debbie Dever Mullins from the White Eagle Credit Union. But unfortunately, they are not here tonight, so I will get this to them.
Thank you, Connie.
Okay, thank you, guys.
I'd just like to say I'm glad I didn't have to judge this year because all the pots looked really good. They really all looked good. Okay. Are there anybody, is there anybody here that wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll go down. And let's look at our two thousand and twenty-six proposed budget and try to get that approved tonight. Council, staff, staff.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, the the original budget hearings were held, I believe, back in late August. Uh, maybe not September second, apologies. And you did your revenue neutral rate hearing and then you did the two thousand and twenty-six proposed budget hearing. And out of that session, the end vote was to table the item for you to go back and continue your conversations on the budget, ultimately with the plan of bringing it back to this meeting for a vote. So you scheduled a meeting on September eleventh that was held in chambers here. And the change that you ended up doing to the budget, you kept, um, if everybody remembers back to the September second meeting, the the big driver of the mill levy change was related to the additional officer positions that were asked for. You did keep the officer positions in the budget. Uh, but you asked us to draft a new certificate showing a reduction in our cash reserve from the nine hundred and fifty thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that reduced the total property taxes by the two hundred thousand uh number. And then the end result from a mill levy perspective, again, we don't set the mill levy. We set the amount of property tax dollars. But the estimated mill levy from the September second meeting was going to be sixty point five zero five. The new estimated mill levy is fifty eight point two two seven. So you ended up reducing about two point three mills with that choice to utilize the carryover to help pay for those positions. So that's the certificate change that you have tonight. I'll turn it over to Council for any conversations.
Council. I do have a couple of people that want to speak from the public, so.
Let's let them do that first.
Okay. Mr. Rivas, would you like to come forward?
Hello, Ron. Ron Rivas, Eighto Three Lake Point Drive. Everything I'm going to talk about tonight is just dealing with the general fund. I support the Department of Safety as a fifty-year member there. These are all my brothers and sisters that they have day one or or day thirty years. So I definitely support that. I'm going off the numbers that Joss had on his cut list. For the four safety officers, it's three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for the four officers. My first proposal is across the board cut of ten percent on all contractual and commodities in the general fund. Not not the service or the salaries and wages or the capital outlays, just the contractual and commodities. If you do that, that comes up to just over one point two million dollars. And I think that would send a very strong message to the citizens of this town that we are willing to cut expenses and cut cut money from the budget. Ten percent of that one point two million obviously is like a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That would be actually cut from the contractual and commodities portion of all the line items in in the general fund. If you take that cut off of your expenditures to pay for the officers, leaves like two hundred and eleven thousand and eight hundred dollars and change. For that two hundred and eleven, my my options on that would be, one, to readjust your revenue and expenses in your budget. Uh, went back through history and as far as I can find, since two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, budget authority for two thousand and twenty-five was nine million and eighty-eight dollars. Uh, actual expenses was eight point three million. Two thousand and twenty-four budget authority was eight point two million. Actual was one point or eight point one six. In two thousand and twenty-three, it was a little closer. There was a four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar difference. And in two thousand and twenty-two, there's only eighty-six thousand dollars difference. I know Joss's, his theory on the budget is to estimate high on expenses and low on revenues. If you look at the sales tax line item in the budget for two thousand and twenty-six, there's one point six million in each of the sales tax funds allocated for revenue. Already this year, we're estimated to end at one point eight million. So we're putting one point six in the budget for next year when we're already at one point eight this year. You take that two hundred and eleven thousand and split it between the two sales taxes and you're at, what, hundred and five, hundred and six thousand? That you could add revenue into your sales tax figure and make up that other two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. I know there was discussion about being careful with the sales tax because it's the possible changes that the state could do, all the exemptions and stuff. But to me, it would be at least July before any of those cuts statewide could take effect. And we would be halfway into the year. And there's a good possibility that the local sales tax could be exempted from that or it may not may not come to fruition. Other ways we could raise some revenue. I'm a big fan of user fees. If if I go to court, I've I should have to pay the court fees. Um, but I know the city in general has to have a court system, so it's there if I need it. But five or six years ago, we put a one cent per kilowatt surcharge on our electric bills to pay a surcharge uh to the Kansas Power Pool for all the energy that we, gas, natural gas that we used during that one storm, sygary or whatever they called it. That one cent per kilowatt surcharge on on just on the electric bills amounted to a lot of money. We actually paid the Kansas Power Pool back early, if I remember right. That's a revenue sourced that I pay to the city that I have control over. I have no control over my property taxes. Twenty years ago, I paid a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for my house. It's doubled. And the only improvement I have made to that house is to add a shed in the backyard. Everything else has been strictly maintenance. I have no control other than coming up here and pleading to you guys and guys that please do something to help me. I thought when I paid my house off, my expenses would go down. No, not really. I still got to put money back every every month for my taxes and insurance. But there is options. I don't know if it's too late for this year. But um, number one, I think that ten percent across the board cut to the general fund on contractual and commodities would send a very good, positive feedback to the citizens, the taxpayers, that, yes, we are willing to make some hard decisions and we are willing to tighten our belt to help you guys out.
Mr. Rivas, your five minutes is up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Ron, that's that's your five minutes.
Okay.
Can we ask him a question? Can we, are we allowed to ask him a question?
Yeah.
Ron, do you have a, do you have a list of those contractual itemized out that you're referring to? And then and then would that mean we renegotiate some of our contracts? And what does that process look like, Josh? I'm asking two people, only one at a time answer, but you know.
Well, per the budget, the contractuals are telephone, gas utility, education and training, vehicle insurance, building insurance, equipment insurance, other insurance, subscriptions and membership, engineering fees, professional services, recording fees, rental, equipment lease, printing and advertising, vehicle maintenance, office equipment, communications equipment, IT services, building and grounds maintenance, other services. And commodities are office supplies, printed materials, personnel services, vehicle supplies, equipment supplies, gasoline, building grounds, supplies, and other commodities.
Josh, how would that look like? How would how would we do that? How feasible is that? Thank you, Ron, by the way. Ron, thank you.
I couldn't tell you what the impact is without going through all of the budgets and those line items. So the contractuals get their name because normally you have some sort of contract. So like if you're paying your insurance, you pay what insurance charges the city for your vehicles, for your buildings. Um, we actually, if you remember, um, I want to say it was the year before last, uh, the the biggest driver of your insurance for buildings is your utilities and predominantly the electric utility. Uh, that's the the boiler and and the cost of that building. Those got reevaluated this year significantly higher. I don't remember what the what the percentage is, but that's driving those costs. So to just be able to cut the insurance is not an option unless you're cutting what you're covering. Now, we did that actually with one of our electric buildings precisely to try to cut costs. We cut about ninety thousand dollars in the budget by not covering our old electric plant on insurance. Um, that that was that was a choice to try to get savings. Um, and other, so on the contractuals, it's going to depend on which contractuals, if that makes sense. Because a lot of them, you're just paying what those things cost us. Um, if it's engineering services, like the engineering services that I think are in the general fund. Um, if you do condemnations of buildings, you pay a structural engineer to do a safety evaluation of the building to make a determination and have the engineer determine if it's a hazard or unsafe. So you have an allocation in your contractual line items tied to condemnations, demolitions. There's not a guaranteed quota on that a year. So if you wanted to cut down that number, that's less intrusive than the than the insurance is because you have like a fixed contract. But then the trade-off is, um, you probably do less condemnations and demolitions because you want to have that as a step to do some kind of evaluation on the building. Um, again, we we would just have to go through all of those line items for me to give you a good answer what's more doable and what's not.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot either. I was just, it just intrigued me. I'm looking, I'm looking for everything I can get, you know?
Yeah, just so everybody knows.
Our insurance, my personal insurance went up. I bet everybody in this room's insurance went up. And I know the city's has gone up, so.
Yeah, so what Ron, what Ron's referring to is is all of our budgets are separated up into funds and then the funds are divided up into expenditure categories with line item groupings underneath them. So you have your personnel, contractual, commodities, capital outlay, which is your equipment and vehicles, and then debt service. In the general fund anymore, the way that we're structured, you really don't have a lot that's going on in the capital outlay except for that reserve, which you reduced. Um, a lot of the the capital costs, um, you now have other reserve funds set up for. So, um, your contractuals is generally a service that you're paying another company for. Commodities are just the things you buy outright. Like if you went to Walmart and you purchased a stapler or something, that that would be commodity. So that's what those groupings are that are being referred to.
Thank you.
Hey, Josh, and correct me because I could be completely wrong, but isn't what Ron's referring to kind of what we did by taking the two hundred thousand out of the general fund? Is the same money coming and going to the same place?
Capital project carry.
You know, we pulled the two hundred thousand from the general fund to help bring the mills down. It is coming off the top, it's ultimately going to the same.
The end result is a mill levy reduction and a reduction in the amount of property taxes. So your choice to lower the reserve did that. His suggestion is essentially accomplishing that through different sort, different line items.
Right, okay. Just making sure.
Mr. Smith. Five minutes.
Sorry for last week. I was under the impression Jeff asked me, hey, what are your ideas? Then you guys, we're meeting in next week. So I'm like, okay, I'll come give you my ideas and didn't realize there wasn't public speaking at a work session.
I think I think I was confused as well. Sorry.
No big deal. Uh, my first thing I wanted to say after sitting through the work session is I I really resent what Jeff and Kami stated that your biggest threats that that you guys face are the legislature.
I said that?
No, Jeff and and, sorry, Josh, Josh, Josh and Kami said the biggest threat you face is the legislature capping them out. You can levy taxes on your neighbors. And if it's the legislature we elect, it's almost a super majority. So majority, way over fifty percent of the public have elected them to go to the State House to try to cut our taxes because the local entities don't listen, the college doesn't listen. I mean, so we have no other option but to speak to our legislatures as well. Like, hey, knock it off with property taxes. You guys have free rein, Butler has free rein, whatever we need, boom, whatever the mills we need, we just do it. There's no tie to inflation. You guys just have the power as we do at the college. And I I resent the fact that they called that your biggest threat was us and our and how we voted. Our elected officials are your biggest threat. I resent that. I don't I don't think that's fair. I mean, we're trying to survive here in town and pay all the taxes. And then as far as ideas go, I think Ron had good ideas, Jake had good ideas last week. But where we currently sit, we're not growing as a town. We're having new amenities. We're having multimillion-dollar fire station. We have multimillion-dollar talk of a new city hall. If we're in a bad spot now, we're not growing. We're not bringing new, younger families that are going to increase the tax base over years and bring families to our community. We're aging out as a community. People are on fixed incomes, retired, houses paid off, expenses go up. We're not bringing new blood into the town to increase our tax base. We've got a four or five million dollar new city hall building. Knock it off for now. Build a metal building, North Augusta, where the old theater was. Find a spot to build it, metal building, one floor, throw your offices in, million bucks, that's not a problem to build that. What we're going to build now is something by the time we, if we do ever grow out of this, we're going to have deferred maintenance on the new building twenty-five years from now. AC will be out, roofs will be out, windows will be out, whatever. We're overspending on what we're generating. And as a town, if we need to charge a little more for electricity, charge a little more for a pool, charge a little, you can charge people for products we buy. That's equal trade. That's that's fair. But taxing us because we own property is unfair. You talk about constitutional, we, that America wasn't founded so we could come here and give half of what we own and earn to the government for whatever the need is. I don't care what the need is. You guys don't have a right to just take from me whenever you need it, just because I happen to have a a wood box on a piece of dirt. Now you can take money I earn. I have three jobs, two pay, one dozen at the college. But there's a lot of people working, you guys understand, it's a hard decision to make. But you need to task your city manager with growth, with other ideas. We can think outside the box. You could start a trade school, build nineteen forty-style affordable homes in a small community with a well. You could build a water tower. How did we do it before government at this level now? We did it back in the day, all through our history. You could have a shared lagoon. You could have one location for a tornado shelter. We could have some green energy. You could do uh, solar panels on all of them with the Tesla battery packs. You could have a small, growing community for smaller families, small kids, two-bedroom house. You have a one, two, three-bedroom option and forty-acre plots. Augusta would be the place to go to grow, have a family, have a little bit of country. I know it's annexing and infrastructure and all that. But when you guys talk infrastructure, if we go west of town, now we have to have a fire station building. But if there's a fire west of town now, does the fire department not drive over there? Sorry, we don't have a building. We're not going to put your house out. But if you dare to try to annex some more tax base, well, now you got to give us a couple million dollar building and the overhead and the equipment. And it's like, we can't do it all right now through spending. We have to grow. And currently, the majority of your budget, I'm sure, seventy-five percent, employees, wages, benefits, that's going to go up. And you and you can't just allow five percent increase of COLA or or just raises every year regardless of what we do as a town. If we can't generate revenue, no one gets a raise. I don't get a raise unless I generate new revenue. A lot of us are the same way. Might be two percent, might be three percent. I think inflation right now is two point four. But our taxes in the last five years, it was going to be forty, now we're backing up. I didn't look at the numbers again. Thirty-five percent in five years, that's, I think, excessive. I'm not saying the police officers aren't a good idea. They are, but we have to be able to pay for what we're we're doing without just taxing a fewer and fewer number of citizens, and we've lost a hundred citizens. And I don't see the growth. We've got, you know, one little housing, is it not five minutes yet? Well, housing addition coming, and I'm sure it's going to be tax-deferred and not generate any revenue for twenty-five years. And everything we do, we're not going to fix up any houses in town without generate, without NRP. So we're not, we're stifling our income that we could make on beautifying the town or building new, I mean, we have to generate revenue somehow, even if it's thinking outside the box. And I would ask you all to task city planners, we've got to do something a little more aggressive or we're going to, I mean, we're already behind the eight ball.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, Shelby. I think what Shelby said was the sentiment of the council Thursday night, too. I mean, we start building.
Outside revenue.
Yeah. I wish they would have.
Right.
Yeah. Agreed.
Thanks.
You know, I'll just remind the council, we've been working on building.
Yep.
We've been working on subdivisions. We have one going in. There's fifteen new houses that have been built. There's fifteen to sixteen more lots available. There's a second subdivision getting ready to break ground. It's going to take another year or two before you actually see that. I mean, we're working that away.
Yep.
Now, sure, there's outside-of-the-box things maybe we can do. But we can't make up for housing development that got stagnated because we didn't have water. You know, we didn't have money, there were housing recessions, two of them that I've been through. So I don't know what to tell you. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I do, just a little bit. In reference to what he said about the wages and things about not giving our employees funds and things, there are there are raises and things. I totally disagree with that. We have excellent employees. We have, you know, minimum amount of employees that work for the city, and they're doing a heck of a job for us. They're doing a great job. And we, in order to retain them, we have to pay them a competitive fee. Right now, it's it's still below what it needs to be. Right, we're not, and you're right, we're not competitive. No, you're fine. It's, we're not competitive. And, you know, we're losing wonderful officers. We're losing people every day that are street people, that are electrical people, things like that, that we need to have here that have worked here, that are talented. And we need to have them here in Augusta. And in order to do that, we have to pay them a competitive for a nice price to do that. Not way above, it's not way inflated or anything like that. It's it's, we're way below. to do that. Not way above, it's not way inflated or anything like that. It's, we're way below what the average is for, you know, for the electrical department, for police departments, things like that. Because, you know, we, like the chief has said before, you know, we are, we can lose officers any day. They can pick up and walk out of here and go get more money other places. They choose to stay here. They have chose to make Augusta their home, and they're paying taxes here just like the rest of us. And things, they're a part of this community. They're not just police officers. They don't just come in and do their job. And things are street people, are solid waste people, are people that live here in our community that pay taxes and stuff in our community. And, you know, like you said about the fire station, you know, if we have a group of people that build houses out west of town, we got to go to support them. We can't just have a fire station sets up here at the north end of town and, and be able to adequately protect people out there. If you get more homes and things like that, then the fire danger and things goes up out there. We have to, would have to build another station and be able to support that and things. So, yeah, it's nice to, and it's easy to say things in here and stuff and not be able to back it up and things. But, you know, we've got wonderful employees. I applaud you. And, you know, we don't intend on losing, on lowering your wages or not giving you benefits because you deserve it. I love you. So, thank you.
Anybody else? What do you want to do with the proposed budget that we have?
I'd like to say one last thing. I'll echo what you said. I agree with you. Medium income, I think we figured out, it's going to be $2 a household. Is that, is that correct? That's what we, for the medium income, it'd be a $2 increase?
If you're asking what the change is, so.
$2 monthly.
I know it's not median income. It's the median.
Sean, are you able to throw this up on the screen for people at home?
We need to go to El Dorado and take, and hang the appraisers.
What you're referring to, counsel, during the meeting on the 11th, one of the things that we had, just to help you evaluate the choices, was a calculator for what the impact was to the property tax dollars. So based on the 2023 census data, census says that our median home value is 162,000. So based on that, the taxable value is 18,653. If you were to keep the same mill levy that you had last year, and then the home value didn't change, then the difference between this year's revised 58.227 and last year's 56.455 is $2.75 a month, $33 for the year. Now, obviously, every single person has a different value home. So if it's less than that, then those numbers go down. If their home is valued higher than that, then the number goes up. But that was the median number.
I just happen to know the work and the brain damage that we've suffered through trying to get this right. And, and anybody who knows me know I'm anti-tax as much as I can. And I've got my mom sitting out here. I'm supporting your mom. I don't want you to, I want your taxes to go up. But I think what the budget that we came up to was the best, worst option. Of all the bad options we had, this is the better one, because you didn't have a good option. They're all bad, but I think this is the best of the bad that we can come up with, to be honest.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion on this budget.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for the approval of the revised 2026 budget.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all. And as Mr. Scott said, none of us up here are elated that we're raising taxes. This was what we feel. We spent 30 to 40 hours going over this already this summer. And it's the best option we've come up with so far. Okay.
Ron, I appreciate you bringing the stuff to us that you did, because I think that's stuff that we need to think about and look at. And I think it's very important, the information that you passed on and stuff to us. So that's stuff that we need to, I think we can look at also in the future and stuff. But thank you for bringing that to us. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ron. Absolutely.
I would echo that. And at the same time, I don't want to discount that that doesn't already happen in the budget sessions. Because to, to the city staff's preparation of the packets, the preparation of the insurance vendors and the other partners that we work with that show us the trends in the industry and how the modest increase that our insurance took this year compared to what the rest of the industry is doing, there's, there is a lot of hard work put into that preparation. And so it doesn't discount the ideas. And so I think the ideas are important to continue coming. And at the same time, I don't want to, I don't want to sell short the efforts of the staff to help put those budgets together.
Agreed.
And Josh, I have a strange thought. Is there a way that we could have a budget, a public meeting prior to our budget so that they can come and see, this is what we're looking at, and get input before, instead of, hey, this is what we decided at the end, here you go. And we get the public's, who did that?
We, I needed a phone anyway.
Yeah, I'll have to buy you one.
That's, that's our, that's our budget work session.
But.
And they're open to the public.
But we don't have any attendance there. Can, is there a way that we can get that at the very beginning? Because they feel like, the feedback I'm getting is they feel like, hey, at the end, after we made our decisions, hey, here you go. And they're like, wow, where'd that come from? That's, and that's maybe on them and not us.
Meetings are within your purview, however you want to have them. So the process you have right now is around mid-February, sometimes March at the latest. But normally around mid-February, you guys have a strategic retreat that is kind of pre-budget, where you start talking about the economic trends and things that we're seeing going on that are ultimately going to impact the budget in certain ways. So you start that evaluation early, and then you kind of do some goal setting and stuff there. So that meeting's an opportunity. And then you lead in to your budget work sessions where all of the funds get introduced and talked about kind of individually from there. So that's the process you have right now. But you guys have control over your meeting setting, however you'd like to do.
And I think I asked the question wrong. The message like this, how do we get the public to show up at the beginning and get their input and hear their voices? Maybe that's the question I should have asked.
Are you asking the council? Are you rhetorically asking the audience?
Rhetorically asking everybody, yeah.
If you get that figured out, you can retire tomorrow.
I just, yeah, no kidding.
Let's move on to our next item of business. Ordinance number 2249, establishing the maximum property tax dollar amount for the library fund and the library employee benefit fund for the Augusta Public Library. Staff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this item is related to the budget adoption that you just did pursuant to statute. The library is a separate taxing entity. And up until a few years ago, the, they actually had the ability to, to continue and raise the property taxes through their, their own, through their own actions. They recommend to council, and they had the ability to do that. But what you implemented years back was a local ordinance that essentially said that if they were going to exceed the tax dollars from the prior year, then you would have to approve it by ordinance. So before that existed, you didn't actually have a way to limit it, even though they, they did kind of limit themselves in those actions. But now you actually have an ordinance. So it's a relatively simple ordinance. The only thing that's being updated, and this is based on the budget that you just adopted, is the amount of tax dollars that are going to the library operating fund and the library employee benefit fund are simply being updated to match the numbers in the budget certificate that you just adopted. So with that, I'll turn it over to you. This is an ordinance, and so it will be a roll call vote.
I suggest we take a five or five minute break. All those in favor say aye.
Make a motion. Make a motion to take a five minute break.
Second it.
Let's get, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We need towels.
We had a, we've got towels.
We got it.
Anthony brought us towels.
I apologize, everyone. That's all on me.
Yeah, it's all on Bob.
Yeah, that's on Bob. I apologize.
Need a motion to come back in.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion.
That we come back in from our recess.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to restart the meeting from our break. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're on item two. Our staff has given us the briefing here. You guys got any questions?
I'm making motion approve the proposed ordinance number twenty-two forty-nine establishing the maximum property tax dollar amount for the library fund and library employee benefits fund for the Augusta Public Library of the city of Augusta pursuant to adopted twenty twenty-six budget.
Second.
Count a motion and a second. Erica, will you call the roll, please?
Martin Burke.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mar.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you. Okay, item number three, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty, amending and supplementing resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen regarding the advisability of issuing industrial revenue bonds for the purposes of financing the total rehabilitation of a senior apartment facility located in the city. Staff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, if you go back to an earlier meeting about two years ago, October second, twenty twenty-three, you decided to partner with a developer on the Country Club Tower to do a rehabilitation. And they are nearing the end of that rehabilitation process. And as part of that, they asked for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds. They are nearing the end of that, and they recently reached out to bond counsel with their request. Our bond counsel, Kevin Cowan, is here, so I'm going to turn it over to him to explain what their request is and what this action is tonight.
Hi, Kevin.
Good evening. So this is pretty straightforward. As City Manager mentioned, two years ago, a resolution of intent was adopted by the governing body, and that project has proceeded and it's nearing completion. But that resolution from two years ago had an end date of October for an effective date that ended October first of twenty twenty-five. And that project qualified for a project exemption for sales tax purposes as a result of that intent resolution. And so that exemption certificate ends October first. This short resolution would just extend the effective period of time for the intent resolution and that sales tax exemption certificate through the IRBs through the end of this year. I contacted the developers to discuss this and just wanted to take their temperature about completion date. Is the end of December going to be sufficient? And they indicated that it would be, and they thought they might be finished in the middle of October. And I said, well, we'll make it a nice round number, extend it through the end of the year. But did want to mention that because if you adopt this probably within the next month or two, I'm going to be back in front of you talking about the issuance of the bonds, which will be issued upon completion of the project.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin?
I make a motion for the approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty, amending and supplementing resolution twenty thirteen dash fourteen extending twenty.
Twenty twenty-three dash four. Believe that should be twenty twenty-three. That's an error on our part.
Twenty twenty-three dash fourteen extending the project and the date.
Dash twelve.
Twenty twenty-three dash twelve.
Second. Second.
Can we restate that just so everything's like we're all clear on what exactly we're supposed to have here?
Yeah, apologies. I think we got this this resolution number for the original one.
One says fourteen and one says twelve.
Incorrect.
Second, I'll find out.
We're verifying it should be twenty twenty-three. The question is a dash twelve or dash fourteen?
I brought a copy in. My copy is dash fourteen.
You have dash fourteen on your copy?
So not twelve fourteen, Erica?
We believe twenty twenty-three dash fourteen.
All right, I'll start it all over. Approval of the resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty, amending and supplementing resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen extending the project end date until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and allowing for the extension of the project sales tax exemption certification certificate.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, I had it on my field, too.
Off your tablet.
I usually do.
I just. My scrolling.
Okay, item number four, which involves Kevin. And resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one authorizing and providing for the construction of a public works campus buildings. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two authorizing improvements to the city public water system. And the resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-five of the city of Augusta, Kansas, to finance the cost of the public works campus buildings and the public water system improvements. Staff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, you do have those three separate items. I'm going to go through each one real quick, and then Kevin is going to fill you in on the the actual financing details of it. But the first item is related to the construction of the public works building. That discussion goes back with previous councils about fifteen, twenty years. There's been a lot of iterations over time. And during the the twenty twenty-six budget process and our strategic retreats, we had talked about that complex, and I think it ultimately came to came to a head with some of the the additional reports and things that we got this year regarding the ADA issues and also the Department of Labor issues regarding that building. But I think everybody was was understanding and on board of the need for facilities before that. But the first resolution is related to the public works complex project. You had a staff report from a couple of months ago where we were describing what that project consisted of. So if anyone from the public hadn't seen that. We already did the first building, the water building that was handled out of the water utility. You have taken recent actions for us to get the salt sand storage building going now so that we can get it constructed before the end of the year and have it available so that the bonds that are conceived of for the remainder of this are related to the the other buildings that we're considering for the public works complex. That'd be the new solid waste building, electric distribution ultimately moving into the current solid waste building at the electric campus, and then streets and parks moving into this building ultimately. You have taken a lot of different votes, whether it was on engineering or just preliminary sort of stuff. This is getting to the point of actually doing the financing in the twenty twenty-six budget that you adopted. The financing, the payments for the annual debt are provided in there. If you remember back to our original strategic retreats and several subsequent budget work sessions, one of the things that we worked to do was try to find a way to finance that that was mill levy neutral. And so you were provided a financing plan of how we could pull that off so that we could minimize the impact to property taxes. So this is all of that project that you all have been working on for the past year. The second resolution, you may not have as good a memory on because it was it was kind of a strange happening that that we went through with the state. It's related to the AMI meters, so the advanced metering infrastructure for the water department. We we were planning and actually had it included at one time in our KDHE revolving loan. We did the the State Street Water Tower, and then we did the AMI meters. They were in that loan program. The problem is, we went through a highly intensive selection process with pilot programs and other things to try to find a metering company that would fit our needs and actually work. And we had started that before we ever knew we were going after the revolving loan. And so initially, when we when we went after it, all indications were we were going to be able to include it in the revolving loan. But the state had indicated later on, after we're already committed to the committed to the projects, that if it's going to be revolving loan funded, they have certain terminology and things they like to see in the contracts and the and the selection process they handle a certain way. While at that point, we had already done the selection process and had committed and had all of things on order. So they basically told us that we were not able to finance that part through the revolving loan, meaning that we had to find a different way to finance it. So we have been carrying that cost for a couple of years, waiting until we had a larger issuance because it's a relatively small issuance on its own. We were waiting till we had a little bit larger issuance to piggyback it onto so that the efficiency of the issuance from a cost perspective would be a little bit less. Because if you do all these things as one-off, you essentially pay your bond counsel, your finance advisors the the same amount, whether it's a twenty million dollar issuance or a five million, you're paying them to do those issuances. So we didn't want to do it as a standalone and add more cost to it. So we waited till we had something to piggyback on to. So that's why they're grouped together. And then the third is related to giving our bond counsel finance advisor authorization to actually move forward, preparing the issuance. So Kevin, can you fill in some details? I know that we talked a lot strategically about the different ways of doing the issuances to try to minimize cost to the city. And there was a whole bunch of back and forth to get to the point we're at now. So maybe you can fill counsel in without without scaring him on the on the technical detail.
Yeah, I'll try not to be too technical, but the the big picture is the first two resolutions simply recite your statutory authority to undertake projects. One is the public works campus. The other is for the public water supply system water meter improvement. So that's what those two resolutions do. They authorize the bonds. And then the third resolution recites, hey, we've now authorized these bonds, and we're going to direct staff and our consultants to do the things necessary to sell the bonds and in late October, come back with bond sale results. So that's the very big picture. City manager is correct. We've worked this back and forth a number of ways. There are some federal tax challenges to issuing tax exempt bonds to reimburse expenditures you made some time ago, as with the water meters, and there are reasons for that. You weren't expecting to not be reimbursed from the water loan program. And so we we got behind some of those requirements. And the good news is typically that would be a taxable bond issue. If you said, we want to issue bonds now and reimburse ourselves for something we spent some time ago, you have a little bit of wiggle room, but not, you know, months and months or more than a year. That would normally be a taxable bond issue. And so we talked about, well, maybe that's just what we'll have to do. We'll have a tax exempt series of bonds for public works, and we'll have a taxable series of bonds for the water meter project reimbursement. Taxable bonds having a higher interest rate because the bondholders will have to pay income tax on those interest earnings, and so they want a higher return. So we wanted to avoid that. I think if we handled this all as a single bond issue and say, public works, which includes a cash infusion, as I understand it, the electric department is going to provide some equity, so to speak, to acquire the existing public works building that for federal tax purposes, not for state law purposes, but for federal tax purposes, we can say, you know what? We're using that cash to replenish the water fund and kind of reimburse those expenditures and just keep that out of the taxable bond realm. And then say, we have a bunch of tax exempt bond funded projects. And so again, that's the really technical part of things. But because you have some equity or cash that you have available that you're going to use for some of these projects for federal tax purposes, we can say, let's use that equity for the water meter project because we don't want to issue taxable bonds for that, and then make an allocation and say, we've spent bond proceeds on things that are permissible, not long ago reimbursements. So that's been some of the background, and I think it's it's a good result. You'll have a single bond issue, tax exempt rates. We won't have to worry about a second series of bonds, as Josh said, where you, you know, you pay some deal costs twice when you have the two series of bonds. So and that's even aside from you don't have any of the higher taxable bond interest rates, which we talked about. Maybe we shove all of those maturities on the water meters to the early year so we pay those off faster and get rid of the taxable interest. And so it was was fairly technical and complex. But this would be a much better result if we have a single series of bonds, which is what these documents contemplate. You'd authorize, as I said, the public works projects and bonds to finance those. That resolution, if you looked at it relatively closely, estimates the total project cost of that at more than eight million, which I think I pulled from a staff report or estimate from some time ago, but also recognizes there's going to be like 1.2 million in cash available from, again, the electric department acquiring the public work, not the public works, the
Solid waste.
Solid waste building. And so the the bond amount that's authorized is seven point two for public works and then a much smaller amount for for the water meters.
And so the end result, after you kind of explained it all to me, you have one debt payment. Our original model still applies to the public works component. And then you essentially just add a fifth column, which is the water utilities contribution for the AMI meters. Currently, they have an allocation that we had plugged in for the revolving loan, but the revolving loan never materialized. So we're essentially just going to use those line items that we're going to that revolving loan and have a fifth column where they're assisting to pay with their portion of the debt service. So it didn't change the underlying assumptions of the other model.
The other thing I'll mention, and and we have been discussing public works for a couple of years. If this procedure or timing is good, I mean, every arrow is pointing in a direction of interest rates improving. They have improved in the last couple of weeks, but probably compared to two years ago or most of the last two years, pretty optimistic that by the time you get to a bond sale in a month or so, if this proceeds, you'll be in and probably just about the best interest rate environment that you've had for three years or so. I mean, since the start of inflation and the Fed taking actions to increase interest rates. So whether that was intentional or not, your your timing will probably be pretty good. Subject to, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what's going to happen in the world economy. And we've all seen the shocks of sudden things like pandemics or housing crisis or things like that that impact things. But again, heading in a good direction.
Josh, are these the AMI meters, are those the ones we already have out there or additional?
Yeah.
We're looking.
You did water and electric at the same time. Electric had a temporary note issuance, and we didn't group the water with it because we were going to be able to to put it into the revolving loan, which had an even better interest rate. And it wasn't until we're already committed and really deep into it that they say that that process, which I think we still are happy with the process because we did those pilot studies to make sure that the product worked. It wasn't simply based on, you know, a low bid selection. It's like, we verified, we put their product into the ground and verified that it worked. That's how we ended up with the vendor that we did. So we're not upset about that process. It's just for their purposes, it did not meet the conditions of their program for a loan. And so that ended up costing us there.
Are we pretty much completed with the city of getting across there? Or what?
Do you? We're done with water? So anybody at home, the comment was a hundred percent installed on water, twenty-five percent installed on the electric meters.
So do we do we have all of those then, Tim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one authorizing providing for the construction of public horse campus buildings.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who was the second?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two authorizing improvements to the city public water system. Remember? That's it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-five of the city of Augusta, Kansas, to finance the cost of public horse campus buildings and public water system improvements.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, item number five, professional services agreement with JEO Consulting Group, Inc. for the C clip US fifty-four melon overlay. Staff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this item is related to a previous action item we had at a prior meeting where you approved the thirteen oh two form for us after being notified that we had received a grant award from KDOT for the C clip program. The thirteen oh two was our acknowledgement and wanting to to move forward with that project. And then this item is related to the professional engineering services in order to design the project. So professional engineering typically is not covered by a grant. That's normally a nonparticipating cost that you're responsible for. Most of the programs, you're able to get your your eighty, twenty percent on the construction itself and the construction engineering, but design is typically on your dime. And so this is the contract for JEO to do the design, essentially going into the twenty twenty-six calendar year so we can get it ready for bid when we actually get into the twenty twenty-seven construction season. I believe the plan is to try to construct in spring of twenty twenty-seven. Is that correct? Are we? Okay, so we don't want to overly commit to that, but that's the rough schedule right now. I do want to issue one clarification from that thirteen oh two form because I think when I was speaking out loud about it, I think I gave you the wrong information on it. There's actually two different grant programs that KDOT does. One of them has a million dollar cap. One of them has a four hundred thousand dollar cap. I think when I worded that at the prior meeting, what we got awarded, I said the million, but it was under the other program with the four hundred thousand dollar cap. So I wanted to clarify that because I told you the wrong program. So we did get a four hundred thousand dollar grant, but our portion on the project is is going to be much higher than than what I was telling you on that million dollars again. I still think it makes sense for you to take that money to assist with your highway project. What we will most likely do is we will probably group that in some kind of temporary note issuance. And depending on what projects you want to include for other streets, we'll probably include the C clip plus what other package of projects you want to do. I'm presuming that that's going to be a sidewalk package, but ultimately you all will have to make some determinations on that. But to that effect, I wanted to let you know that I had started the process with our consultant to outline the sidewalk project area so that we can start putting our grant application together for the community development block grant. If we're able to get that, that'll really help us leverage our available funding because ultimately our goal is to to do a large sidewalk package and try to knock out as much as as possible. But it's all related to this in the sense that in all likelihood, we're probably going to be doing a temporary note issuance for the first package of our new twenty twenty-seven sales tax program. So they're all related. But the action item tonight is simply for the engineering services for the the melon overlay striping project that you authorized the thirteen oh two form at the prior meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to council for any questions that you may have.
Counsel?
Yeah, the overlayment there on the school street there at the end of Hyde School and then again at the end of Twelfth and School. The one at Hyde School's got some marks like.
added too heavy a truck on it afterwards.
That doesn't have to do with this motion.
Uh, okay.
An hour, we can do it and, and matters fore from either way.
Yeah, I don't care. Whichever way. But I was just trying to get it while he was up here. I was trying, I was trying to save him some steps, but.
All right.
So I, I thought maybe this was part of the continuance, really, to be honest with you.
It's a different project.
No, it's a, what I think you're referring to is our pavement preservation package that we put out every year. The one that they're discussing is, is a much bigger project. It's where they actually mill the road out and put new asphalt down. The pavement preservation is actually a micro surface. It's put down in about half inch thick, creates to a half inch thick. It's just a layer of emulsion and aggregate, and it just seals the road and gives yourself a new driving surface. We expect that to last about five years. The marks that you're referring to, they're not done yet. They'll, they'll look at those marks. We'll either have those on a punch list or we will, we'll go out and look at them. A lot of times those marks will kind of work themselves in. So we don't jump right on it right away. We kind of sit back and watch them a little bit. But they will be finishing up this week and we do have a punch list. And I believe those are on the punch list.
Okay, thank you. Again, sorry. I, I thought that was part of the approved.
No, no big deal. Thank you.
Counsel, we need a motion about this item five.
I make a.
I make a motion to approve a professional services agreement with JEO Consulting Group for completion of C clip US fifty-four melon overlay project at an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand and authorize city manager Josh Shaw to sign.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that takes us down to matters from and for council. So Mr. Martin, do you have anything tonight?
Small little thing pertaining to the roads out on the median exchange where you go from the four lane to the two lane on the old highway fifty-four east side, east side of the overpass. There's a couple holes starting to develop.
Say it right in this area, Mike.
Right in that area, yes. One in the west lane going out onto the four lane. And where you come from the west going into east to go turn there, it's really, it's deteriorating. And you guys have patched it two or three, four times, but there's a really good hole in the west lane side of that little median exchange there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Bob?
I already stuck mine in.
All I have is, do we have Eighth Street behind McDonald's and Dairy Queen in the plan somewhere? I had somebody in my ear today about it. And there's a big, there's several big holes back there. And I even yelled into it and somebody responded in Chinese. So I know it's deep. So I don't know what's going on there.
It's gravel, I believe. Gravel.
Yeah. Can we put that in the plan on our agenda some, somehow?
They, they do, they do regular grading on it. So it's just a matter of where it fits into their queue.
Okay.
If they've got holes to fill. Anthony, I, I don't know what your schedule is right now. I know you guys have been chasing the, the PPP for a while. But I also know that you normally have the, the grading of the, the rock streets built in somewhere in the year.
Yeah. So we are chasing the PPP right now and we're also working on the compost. The rain's been a killer on that. Because whenever it rains, that's when the holes start to come back. We like to have a little bit of moisture in the road when it grade. Just so it kind of packs back together, but then too much moisture is bad. So we will get on it probably in the next. I'll look at it tomorrow. I can tell you that much and.
I appreciate that.
From there.
Thank you.
Just to mention, on the website, there is a place where you can go and tell the city about potholes and their location. Just for the general public, they can do that. And then that way he gets a list and he can go, well, in two weeks, we'll go out and fill potholes in this section of town. They can't be jumping around filling this pothole today and one tomorrow. It just doesn't work good for them. Kip, you got anything?
I have one thing. Josh, is there something, some way we can, I don't know, make it more visible of what we, all the things that we have in motion and things, you know, now we've got the, the city work stuff, we've got OGware, we've got all this stuff in works. Just so we kind of, I know you give us updates and things, you know, periodically and stuff, but it just seems like there's so many different things out there. I was looking and it's hard to find on the, on, in the.
Project tracker.
In there.
Yeah, so the, the project tracker was the tool that's intended to be about that. It's only as good as how well we keep it up. And so we haven't kept up with it as, as good as we need to. We did update it recently. So the public works campus, its history, all of that's on there. So people can go and read that background. The, let's see. So the Red Bud Trail where that stuff stands, I think we have updated that. Base grant still ongoing just for a short period of time as they pull that, that final line, advanced metering infrastructure. So we'll go through our list, see if there's other projects that needed to be put on there. But if people go to our website and do the search feature, the project tracker is generally where we want to, to aggregate that. So if there's some other things that you'd like us to get some more description, please, please let me know. I, I honestly, I'm, I'm not on the website as much as I used to be.
And, and I understand. And it's not, it's not meant, that's not meant detrimental to you in any way. It's just, I like to, I try to keep, want to keep stuff out in front of us and stuff so we'd see what we're doing. And so we can keep moving on things. We've talked about stuff going on for, you know, when to get housing in Augusta and stuff. And I, I think some of those projects and stuff, if we keep out in front of us, I think that's something we need to look at and do as we move forward and stuff into the future and things, keep some of that stuff, ideas and things are going on because I know, I mean, I've heard, I heard people speak tonight, you know, and just about everything this person said was like stuff that we've already talked about. I mean, looking at solar, we've looked at that. We've talked about that, you know, we just, all the different things we've done and stuff. I just try to keep some of that stuff out in front of the council. So we don't just bring it up and talk about it, but we actually go do something or we keep it on our front plate and go do something about it and keep it where we're working on it in our strategic retreat. We're working on it in our deals and stuff like that. So and it's mainly I want to talk about as a tool for us or for me, is what I'm looking for. So.
There, there's a combination of tools. It's the project tracker that's on the website. And then in documents, when our twenty twenty-six budget document is actually completed and I get that posted, the, the major projects will be grouped in our five-year capital improvement plan. And so we'll, we'll get that updated and posted as well. And so that's kind of a baseline. It doesn't have to be all that we do, but for anyone that's trying to find reference materials on that, those are, are good reference points in terms of what we offer now. So we'll make sure that those get updated and then we'll continue interacting with you all on what you would like to see going forward to try to keep that information in front of you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing. Jeff?
Nothing.
No. Our motion to adjourn. Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I apologize, everybody, for disturbing us. I, I apologize.
Don't worry about it. Well, I'm telling, I'm.